Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Get a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Conflict of interest declarations? Seeing none, any changes or deletions to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. B, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do you have anyone in our physical audience who would like to make a public comment? Seeing no hands, and our screen's not on, Michael, can you tell us if we have anybody in the virtual world?
There's nobody raising their hand at this time.
Thank you. It's going. Thank you. It's blinking. It's working on it. Ma'am, I know you just walked in. Were you here for any type of public comment? We're leaving it open for anyone who wants to make a public comment on any item not on our agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on. We do not have a student liaison at this point, but that has been passed out to the entire school district. E, proclamations. Can we go to E1, Latino Heritage Month? Is there anyone that would like to read that? Seeing none, I will. It just says H-G-M-I-1. No signal. Great, so we'll just keep moving forward. All right. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale proclaiming September 15th, 2023 through October 15th, 2023 as Latino Heritage Month. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month began as a commemorative week when it was first introduced in the June of 1968 by California Congressman George E. Brown. I apologize, it's small writing and my eyes aren't doing well right now. The push to recognize the contributions of the Latinx community has gained momentum throughout the 1960s when the civil rights movement was at its peak and there was a growing awareness of the United States multicultural identities. Whereas in 1968, President Lyndon B. Johnson first recognized Hispanic Heritage Week. Later, this was expanded to one month, and each successive president has continued this tradition, declaring September 15th through October 15th to be National Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas Governor Gavin Newsom issued a proclamation Sunday, September 15th, declaring September 15th to October 15th, 2023 as Latino Heritage Month in the state of California, whereas Sonoma County has a long history of welcoming immigrants and is home to growing multi-ethnic and multicultural Latino populations. Whereas the diverse Latino population of the county of Sonoma makes a significant economic contribution and has many profound positive influences on our community through strong commitment to family, faith, education, hard work, vibrant culture, and service. And whereas for over the past decades, Sonoma County Latina organizations and businesses have continued to foster the culture and traditions to our communities to being active community members and focusing on the areas of education, health, wellness, and the local economy. Whereas the City Council of the City of Cloverdale is in deep appreciation to the diverse Latino population of our community and urge all citizens to join us during Latino Heritage Month in celebrating these extraordinary communities and their role in our county. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Cloverdale does hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2023 as Latino Heritage Month in the City of Cloverdale, so ordered today's date, myself, Todd Lance, the mayor. We had Jade Waymouth from La Familia Sana was supposed to be here to accept this proclamation. Unfortunately, she was unable to make it tonight, so we are accepting it on her behalf. So, thank you. Any comments? One. Seeing none. We'll move on to E2, Creek Week proclamation.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale proclaiming the week of September 18 to 24, 2023 is Pollution Prevention Week and September 16 to 23, 2023 as Creek Week in the Russian River watershed. Whereas throughout the United States of America, the week starting on the third Monday of September is recognized as National Pollution Prevention Week. And whereas throughout much of California, including the Russian River watershed, cities, counties, and other stewardship organizations are recognizing the fourth week of September as Creek Week. And whereas our pollution prevention practices are intrinsically linked to the health of our watershed lands and waterways. And whereas the nearly 1,500 square miles of lands, 150 creeks, and approximately 350,000 residents of the Russian River watershed are connected and mutually support each other. And whereas the City of Cloverdale supports programs to reduce pollution, increase the environmental quality of our watershed, and provide our communities with the knowledge to be effective stewards of the Russian River watershed lands and waterways. And whereas pollution in the form of trash and debris, chemicals from industry and everyday living, and sediment from construction and many land uses and activities all have the potential to degrade the quality of life and the quality of resources within the Russian River watershed. And whereas the Russian River, along with the tributaries and associated features, are important resources to the people of Sonoma County. And whereas the City of Cloverdale strives to protect our lands and waterways through ongoing pollution prevention outreach, which aims to raise awareness of the harmful effects of pollutants to our native, to our natural systems. And whereas during the Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week, river and ocean cleanup campaigns will take place throughout Sonoma and Mendocino County and the City of Cloverdale. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the City Council of the City of Cloverdale does hereby proclaim that September 18th to 24, 2023 is Pollution Prevention Week and September 16th to 23, 2023 is Creek Week in the Russian River watershed. And ask all members of our community to support, to protect, and enrich our watershed health by participating in the many Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week activities and to take active steps to reduce pollution and care for the environment throughout the year, so ordered September 13th, 2023 by Todd Lance, the mayor of Cloverdale. And then I was going to talk a little bit about the activities pertaining to Cloverdale. There'll be activities countywide, but in Cloverdale, we will be celebrating Creek Week led by our Park Superintendent Hector Galvin on September 16th from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. If you would like to show the Russian River some love by volunteering to help pick up trash and plastic along the river on September 16th, go to RRwatershed.org to sign up for one of the following locations: Asti Bridge, Cloverdale near the cemetery, Geyserville and the Geyserville Bridge. You will receive the gift and you can win prizes. And if you need more information, you can contact info@russianriverkeeper.org.
Tonight, we have Vanessa Apodaca to accept this proclamation. Would you like to come forward and say a few words for us? Mike might not be on. It's on the top, so you can push, hold it down for a sec.
One more time. There you go.
There you are.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm honored to be here to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Russian River Watershed Association. I do want to give a special recognition real quick to Councilmember Morganstern, who is on our Board of Directors, and also Councilmember Bagby, who is our board alternate, and Derek Montagne, who is part of our technical working group. It's great that we're able to collaborate, and I really do want to encourage citizens to come out and participate in this community cleanup event. It's very rewarding. We get all kinds of great stuff out of the watershed, all kinds of pollutants. Last year, they even pulled a motorcycle out of Cloverdale's creek cleanup. So, come one, come all. Anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Does anyone want to make any comments? Can we get a picture with you?
That'd be great, yes.
Yeah, there, Kevin. Creek Week. Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Thank you, guys.
H-G-M-I-2, not 1. Good to know. All right. Thank you. We rely on you way too much. All right. Moving on, G, consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Do we have any items you would like to pull tonight? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Bagby, second by Wheeler.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Passes five to zero. And I see we have a new guest in the audience, Jade Waymouth. We already did it. Yes. Can we, can we take our picture with you? Get it out of the way? Great. You're not getting away with it, I'll tell you that.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
On your toes. Yes, sir. All right, since we have no public hearings, we'll move on to I, new business. First item is I1, Clearwater Ranch Urban Growth Boundary Ballot Initiative Discussion and Direction.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This item tonight is going to be presented by Kevin Thompson, our Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director. I just do want to note that we do have representatives here from Clearwater Ranch. Ms. Katie Carney's in the audience with her fellow board member Howard. Following the presentation by staff, would recommend that we receive a presentation that was included in your packet by the Clearwater Ranch representatives. But at this point, I'll turn it over to Kevin for introduction of this agenda item.
Thanks, David. I was actually going to have Clearwater Ranch go first, and then afterwards, I'm going to lay out some options for the council to consider seeking direction on how we can move forward with this. So, Katie, you want to come on up?
Everyone, my name's Katie Carney. I'm president of a nonprofit organization called Living Unlimited, and our purpose is to provide housing options for intellectually and developmentally disabled adults. And Clearwater Ranch was founded for that purpose. And you'll see, as we go through the charts here, you know, how we are going to try and accommodate the families that have subscribed into the company that purchased the property. Living Unlimited, the nonprofit, manages the LLC, the company that purchased the property, for all the members and their family. So, next chart. So, this gives you the perspective of what we're talking about. Clearwater Ranch is in the kind of red boundary, and we have an adjacent parcel owned by another company and gentleman. And the reason we have to include them is if they don't get annexed in with us, they'll become an island of Sonoma County encircled by the City of Cloverdale. So, we're joining together in this endeavor. And you can see, actually, could you go back for a second? You can see all the different issues that we have to kind of address. There's the urban growth boundary, there's the urban service area, the sphere of influence, and then, of course, the city limit. The sphere of influence cuts through our parcel by elevation lines, so it's that, you know, crooked line through the, through that portion of the parcel. The urban service area, you'll see in the charts too, where we kind of are saying right now, we're kind of looking at that might be the boundary, but we're also considering moving it more to the east, closer to our current water tank. So, next chart. So, this just gives you some background. Currently, we have, you know, there are five large homes on the parcel, four one-bedroom cabins. We have a large community center and some other structures, and then we also have a very shallow, which is nice for our community, a four-foot-deep swimming pool. And so currently, two of the houses are rented to developmentally disabled adults. One house is rented to a licensed senior care facility. We'd like to keep them on the property moving forward. We think it's good to have our community integrated with other folks. We just rented one of the cabins to a brand-new teacher at Cloverdale High School. He just got hired on. He's your new biology teacher. We're real happy to have him onboard. And then two houses and three of the cabins are rented to low-income tenants. So, we can, we need to work with the county right now to get us counted in as affordable housing because currently, they're not counting us. We want to make sure we get included. And of course, all of our IDD residents are also extremely, you know, they're very low-income. They're all, they live off of SSI or SSDI. And then the adjacent parcel is owned by Mr. Arvin Babu, and his consultant will talk to a couple of charts they've included in the package. One of the main features they have on their parcel is there's a 10-acre capacity pond. So, next chart. So, our future use is, the plan is to house 20 to 24 developmentally disabled adults on the property. With the current configuration of residences and without having to, you know, vacate the house that has the senior care facility on it, we can support housing for 16 developmentally disabled adults. Our current zoning does not support building additional homes on the parcel. We, we're working, you know, we've been working with the county, with both Mr. Kelly and Mr. Thompson here from the City of Cloverdale, and we've been meeting, and also with permit Sonoma. And everyone's recommendation was that we try and take the path of annexation at this point in order to add additional residences and change the zoning of the property. It was originally built as a school, a special school, for foster boys, and that's our current use permit, so that also is a bit of a problem as well. So, we, we need the use permit to be updated and also the zoning changed. One of the other things that we have done, and we've talked with Ag and Open Space Sonoma about conserving, you know, part of our, getting a conservation easement for part of our parcel to connect with Portofield Creek Preserve. And so, we're looking at, that might be more than 50 acres of the western part of our parcel, because we know we're not going to ever develop that portion, and we, you know, we think it'd be good to get the conservation easement for that in perpetuity. One of the other things we've been talking with the county and city about is increasing the public safety access to the Western Hills, where we can connect all the fire roads through both our parcel and also the Babu parcel. We have a very large water supply on our parcel. We have a 50-gallon-per-minute well, 75,000-gallon water tank, and we have an auxiliary tank as well. We also have a hydrant system on the property. So, we would foresee working with the city and/or the county, if we were to extend the fire roads up through the western part of the parcel, we would look into extending also our hydrant system, so there would be water access up the hill to suppress any sort of wildfires in that area. The future use of the Babu parcel is contained on Slides 7 and 8, but, as I said, their consultant from Hogan Land Services will talk to that. Next chart. So, this is what we have today on the parcel. You can see our large water tank. We also have H1 in the picture is the senior care home. We have our large leach field that is in the middle there. And then our pool, H2, is, currently houses three developmentally disabled adult men. House 3 is rented to a HUD Section 8 family. House 4 has two developmentally disabled adult women living there part-time. And then at the top of the hill, H5 is rented to low-income family. And Cabin 1, we just rented to the high school teacher. Cabin's 2, 3, and 4 are rented to low-income tenants, one of which is also HUD Section 8. And then what's called EC there, that's our enrichment center. That's our kind of community center where activities happen. So, and it's all listed down the side there. Next chart. So, what we're proposing is, again, same picture, but if you look at A, that's we're proposing a site for an ADU to house our community manager. That's someone that would do the property management, kind of oversee, make sure, you know, for the, some level of oversight for our developmentally disabled adults, making sure that the caregivers are onsite and doing their job. B is, we're proposing adding a duplex, it would be four-bedroom by four-bedroom. We wouldn't fill them all. We're looking at having that for flexibility, and probably in each one of these duplex, both duplex B and C, one room on each side, one bedroom on each side would be considered a staff room for their respite. Okay, thank you. And then, so we have proposed sites, but, you know, we would have to do a survey and all that, but we've identified some candidate sites, and those are also well below the height limits for development in the Western Hills. H3 on there, that's currently rented, the plan is to convert two of the existing staff rooms, as they're classifying that, into a junior ADU. So, we would house four developmentally adult, developmentally disabled adult men in that house, and then have a junior ADU, which we are hoping to, you know, rent to a caregiver. So, that, again, would be workforce housing there. And then the last one would be converting H, the current building at H5, which is a manufactured home, into a, also another duplex, could be three-by-three bedroom or four-by-four, but we're looking, that would provide affordable housing for the caregivers onsite. So, next chart. So, now I'm going to turn this over to Daniel Byrne from Hogan Land Services. I believe he's on the Zoom call.
Yeah, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay? Excellent. Yeah, thanks, Katie. Yeah, my name's Dan Byrne. I'm with Hogan Land Services, representing Arvin, who is the owner of the 15-acre piece. And as Katie mentioned, the reason he's part of this deal is simply to And as Katie mentioned, the reason he's part of this deal is simply to avoid this creation of this county island. So, Mr. Babu is certainly very sympathetic to CRC's mission and their cause, so he was more than happy to be a part of this and do our best to see that through. So, my job in that is really just to understand the impacts to his parcel and really protect his entitlement that he currently has as a county parcel to build his house or multiple houses on his 15-acre parcel. So, real quick, if you want to just go to Slide 7. Just got to give you a quick, brief overview of what's going on on the Arvin Babu parcel. It's 15 acres. He bought it in 2012 with the intention of building a house for him and his family, perhaps an ADU. There we go. His parcel is accessible only from Clover Springs Drive. There's no Choublay access. There's a Blue Line Creek that prevents access from that side, so only access from Clover Springs. A couple of key characteristics of the parcel, there is a large 10-acre plus-or-minus acre-foot pond, which he does have water rights from the Regional Water Quality Control Board for both domestic and agricultural beneficial uses. And then, there is an existing ranch road that connects Clover Springs dead end up to the build site, which is at the knoll top with a spectacular view south down the valley. Just real quick, so currently, obviously, it's an unincorporated Sonoma County parcel. It's zoned RRD, Resources and Rural Developments. There's no existing infrastructure on the parcel, other than he brought in power and there is an issued well permit to drill well. Entitlements that he holds just ministerially under his RRD zoning, he can do several different agricultural uses, including crop production and livestock. He can do Ag buildings. There's opportunities for Ag dwellings, depending on his Ag use, potentially multiple agricultural dwellings. And then, just standard residential uses, primary dwelling, ADU, any number of residential accessory structures. So, the city of Cloverdale and LAFCO both analyzed this parcel as part of their general plan. And these parcels fell under the Area 5 Western Hills, which was really intended to be protected for forested hillside and conservation. So, under the West Side Hills establishment, the intention was to zone parcels under the 400-foot elevation as R1 and everything above the 400-foot elevation as RR with a much lower density up over 500 or up and over 400 feet in elevation. The orange line that you see on this slide is the 400-foot elevation contour, so that splits the parcel. If we can go to the next slide. Great. So, just for the sake of pre-zoning, right, just getting that information out there, our preliminary pre-zoning proposal is simply just to apply the MSR/LAFCO report and the general plan as it was written. So really, we're hoping for a split zoning. Basically, everything under 400 feet would be zoned to R1 post-annexation, and everything above the 400-foot line would be RR. And that would both satisfy the needs for annexation to avoid this county-island issue and also maintain Arvin's ability to build his house where he would like to build it, which is why he bought the parcel. So, on this slide, you'll just kind of see that split line. The pink would be the R1. Majority of that is encumbered by the pond and the setback. There's a 50-foot setback associated with that. So there's a little bit of space down there for some development. And then, the R1 green area would really be its own separate development, suitable only for a primary, single-family dwelling. On this chart, you'll also see, just from the general plan, it just identifies the two zoning districts. I'll spare you the details, but if you were interested, it's in your packet and you could click that. Katie, I'll take it back to you.
So here is, shows the elevation and sphere of influence. They're tied together. Also, the urban service area. And you can see, I mean, it's hard to see, but there is our water tank on there. So, if the current urban service area is not acceptable to make all the, you know, the urban growth boundary, the service area, the sphere of influence, and city limit all to be coincident where it currently is, we're, you know, happy to move it more to the east closer to our water tank. And so, I know Kevin's going to talk more about this, but there's the, we have to modify the urban growth boundary. That requires ballot measure. City approvals are required. LAFCO has been involved in our discussions with the county and the city. And even though they said that they've, they've told us we do have some challenges, they think they can help us work through all those challenges, so they haven't told us no yet. So we're looking at what approvals, moving forward here from the city, that will be required to place a measure on the ballot for the voters to consider moving the urban growth boundary. And then, once, you know, that got approved, then LAFCO would be responsible for approving the annexation as well. And moving this, definitely the sphere of influence and sphere, and the urban service area. And, next chart. Questions?
I'd like to go first. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Just a couple of clarifying questions. Kevin, the mention of RR zoning from the county, what is the RR zoning?
Rural residential. Oh. I'm not sure if that's what the county zoning is currently, but that's one of the proposed. I think what we want to do tonight is just, because we're getting kind of in the weeds with the zoning, proposed pre-zoning, so I think we're really trying to seek direction on whether the council, how the council wants to proceed with this. And I just want to take a step back, and maybe I should have said something before Katie's presentation while we're here, really is that this property is outside of our UGB, which was a ballot initiative approved in 2010, and it's good for 20 years. And the only way, so normally, if properties that are within our UGB, we can annex them through the normal process. It's a long process, but we can do that. This one happens to be outside of the UGB, which the council doesn't have control over. It's, you know, so it has to be a competing, not a competing, but an amended ballot measure. So, that's really the first step in this process, and then there's several other steps beyond that. But really, our discussion tonight was, you know, how the council wants to proceed with a potential ballot measure.
Thank you for that clarification, because I was ready to go down a rabbit hole here. But, so I'll stop there. And just one more question. It wasn't quite clear to me on the map, but there's three parcels that have to be annexed in. How many of those properties are outside our urban growth boundary?
There's, it's two parcels, but originally, Clearwater Ranch was three parcels. And that's why I included that old assessor's map where it shows the division. And it looks like the urban service area line on that old assessor's parcel is one of the dividing lines of the original three parcels. But it's only two, and both parcels are outside the urban growth boundary.
Mr. Babu's one of those?
Pardon?
Is Mr. Babu's property one of those that are outside?
Yes.
Both of the parcels, the CRC parcel and the Babu parcel are outside.
Thank you. That was it.
So, I'm lucky enough to get this second time. It's in the subcommittee, and I guess since then and seeing their presentation tonight, I'm just looking at the development that you're proposing, and it's very modest.
It is, yes.
It's very modest. And I'm just wondering if so, for my edification, you're looking at, you know, regardless of the route that, you know, the council decides on either us going back to the voters or you going to the voters for signatures. I'm having trouble understanding how this pencils out for you. I can understand you've got your own water system. I would imagine that you might be required to hook up to city sewer, and that's, it's, you're looking at some pretty
Right.
...large infrastructure expenses. So, just, yeah, wondering how this, how this pencils out, because that's usually the, that's usually the breaking point of most projects.
That's, that's correct. And that's why they've, they've kind of capped it at 24 residents. I mean, the current, well, the current membership of the LLC decided how big they want the community to be. So, they decided 20, first they thought 20 was good, and then we discovered that probably in order to make it economically feasible moving forward, where the, you know, because these are low-income renters, in order to cover the costs of insurance and property taxes and maintenance, that sort of thing, we needed 24 to cover the net operating costs. So that's, and the community really just wants to keep it at 24. So, we still will have other rental units onsite, which also can help with the, you know, operating income. But, yeah, they just, that's why the development, even though it's a large parcel, is, they want it to be, you know, kind of contained to one area so that they're, again, it's the sense of community. They're all living together and doing activities together. And then, also, you know, we want to be sensitive to all the issues from the city of looking up into the Western Hills. We don't want to start building a lot of things there that people can see from the valley floor. And, you know, it's, we've worked out the numbers, so it will, you know, work out moving forward, and we have, you know, money when we sell the subscriptions to the company. That covers a lot of these infrastructure projects moving forward in order to do things like adding the additional residences, connecting to the city sewer, hopefully, and, you know, any other things. I know we probably have to improve our road on the site as well, so.
If I, one more question, just to follow up. Because I just, I don't remember if we asked this in the, in the, in the subcommittee meeting too. Can you also just kind of describe what protection there is with the, your LLC that this will not be, you know, handed over or sold to another entity? What is the framework that?
So there, yeah, there's an operating agreement between the members of the company and Living Unlimited as the manager. So, you know, there's all sorts of protections for the residents, you know, because this is their home in perpetuity. And then, also, we make sure that, you know, the company stays solvent. That's, we do, you know, we're worried about the accounting, paying the bills, and, you know, all those things in running the company. So, the LLC, everyone would have to decide, all 24 members, once it's fully subscribed, would have to decide to dissolve the LLC before they could sell the parcel.
Councilmember Morton, do you have any questions right now? Go ahead, sir.
Well, I, you know, I just have one more, and I promised this to be the last one, but, you know, it concerns me because we've mentioned twice already about the 400-foot level. You know, I, you know, I personally, I, in this vote, will not accept anything over the 400-foot level. I don't, I don't know how it pencils out and how you're planning on developing, if you have to go into the hills a little bit, but, but, you know, I mean, that's part of our urban growth boundary, is the protection of those west-side hills. And I just want to make sure that you're quite clear on that.
Yeah, we are. And that's why the proposed building sites that we have are down where our current buildings are, the current development is. And the only one that is above 400 feet is be, would be replacing the existing building that's there. We wouldn't be adding anything new, except for the ADU. But again, that is not seen, there's a hill behind it, so it can't be seen from the valley floor. It would only be seen from the, within the parcel, the developed part of the parcel.
So Kevin, a question will kind of be for you, and it's more of an explanation. Just for the public's edification, can you explain how we got to this point and what the options are of what we're talking about today for the direction versus the whole project itself?
Definitely.
If we set, you know, whatever we get for direction, can you explain the two options that we have?
Yeah, I had, so if the council wants to support this and, you know, is in favor of bringing a ballot initiative forward, we've kind of outlined in the agenda report briefly how that could happen. Really, it's two ways, and they have pretty much one real distinct difference between the two, but the first one would be that the applicant would gather signatures and get it on the ballot. And then, in the staff report itself, I kind of put some of the pros and cons to those, or at least some of the key points. So if it's a, Mike, can you go to the next one? I think I started. So they would be required to gather the signatures. They would have to, it takes, it's a longer timeframe because each one of those signatures has to be verified by the county clerk. And then, again, it would, it provides less flexibility, because once they start gathering signatures, nothing can be amended in the language that they're collecting for. There's some stuff with the CECL. Ultimately, CECL will have to be done. I mean, and under that scenario, it just will be done a little bit later. And I don't know that that's really that, that big of a deal. The next point really is that they control all the language in the council. You know, they, I think they're absolutely willing to work with us on the language, but ultimately, they would control the language. In terms of the costs, I mean, from what I gather, working with Alex Mog, that the cost is pretty much the same. We have to pay to put it on the ballot. And Jose may know more about that, but can you go back one, Mike? The other way is that we sponsor, city sponsors it through a resolution or ordinance, I'm not sure. We would have more control over the language. We can amend it to up, to close to the day of the election, as we see fit, if things come up after gathering public input from the community. Again, with the CECL, the CECL would be, we'd have to do some CECL upfront. And then, again, the cost is the same. So, I think the real big difference, and Jose and David can chime in on this if I'm missing something here, is under the city-sponsored, we really control the language. And we control the way it's written, and so we would have just a little bit more say on how that works. And then, before we, we can talk about that now, but I also have some other things that we're looking for direction on, on the last slide, so.
So just one real quick clarification with that. Either way, the city budget is really tight, not enough to absorb this. What can we do about that, start?
Well, one of the suggestions is that we work with the applicant to set up an account. We do that a lot with big developers, where they give us a deposit and we charge our money, our, our time and materials against that account. So that would be part of the discussion. I think that that would be something that we would certainly be seeking.
Questions right now, or can Kevin continue?
Well. Go ahead. Well, let me just ask one question. Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. You know, Kevin, you said we would have more control over that when it, when the urban growth boundary amendment. You know, I'm not so sure that's a good thing, that we have more control over that from a liability standpoint. So that's something, not now, but that's something down the road I'd be interested in hearing on as potential liability if we take this under the city's umbrella.
Maybe I could, I could jump in. The, the, so even, even going, going backwards a little bit, just in the presentation, just for the public, the urban growth boundary is, was, was established by the voters, as Kevin mentioned, and that was in, I believe it was in 2010. That amended your, your general plan in order to impose this, the serving growth boundary. The proposal or the, what needs to happen for it to change, it has, it has to go back to the voters. Regarding liability, the reality is whether, obviously, whether something is, whether your boundaries increase or decrease, I think the liability really results in what type of projects there are and what type of indemnification, obviously, for the jurisdiction that there, that there is. And really, what we're looking at, and I know Kevin is going to go through the points, but there's really two ways to change, to get a ballot measure on an election. There's the actual, the actual process of the jurisdiction of the city placing it on. And you've seen that, we put a ballot measure recently on an election, it's similar process, amending our general plan, but going to the voters to amend this, this, the serving growth boundary. And then- And then there's having the actual, the, by initiative, by voter initiative, having the, the voters go, or having an individual go gather signatures and have it placed by the voters. I think that that's kind of the decision. Regarding costs, I agree, and many times when there's somebody that wants to place something on the ballot, we would work with them on what's the cost, and a lot of times, they would help, because it's also easier, an easier process if the jurisdiction puts it on. So we would be working on, on, with them, a potential cost recovery, if you will. Regarding flexibility of the ballot language, there are other things that potentially the, the council would want to change on, and I don't know, Kevin, you were probably going to get into that, but there are maybe other things from the UGB that the council wants to change, including the sunset. I believe right now it was a 20-year, for 20 years, so the sunset's coming up. It's on 2030. So that may be something that the council wants to explore. Is that something that you want to go to the voters to extend, potentially? Or there are other potential changes that the council wants to make? I don't have any, I don't have a list of them right now. I know, David, you had mentioned the, the, you're the one that mentioned the sunset date is potentially an option, which I think is a, is something to consider. But that's when we talk about flexibility, where if we don't control it, somebody may say, well, we don't want to, we don't want to cloud, we don't want to muddy the, the measure, we'd rather do just what we want, what we're looking for at this time. So that's what, that's what flexibility, why flexibility came up.
And Mayor, if I, if I can weigh in and maybe elaborate a little bit on some of the comments by our city attorney around this issue of, of, of control. Of course, the direction we're, we're asking tonight is whether to proceed with a ballot measure. Ultimately, if you do decide to proceed with a ballot measure, and again, assuming that it successfully passes the voters, what that would mean is that the property subject to approval of LAFCO become within the city's jurisdiction. And I think that's very germane, I think that speaks to kind of your question, Vice Mayor Walter, around general plan policy and the 400-foot, is elevation and development is, if the, if the property ultimately does annex in the city, the city has jurisdiction and would look to its policies to guide future development of the property. And so that is where I think there's a real germane discussion around potential annexation is, is ultimately land use authority and land use control for future development of the property. Right now, obviously, the, the property's in the county, it's under the county's jurisdiction, under county's zoning authority. Ultimately, if the, the property, you know, meets and addresses all of the varied requirements, it would then be fully subject to general plan, policy, zoning code requirements, et cetera. And the Planning Commission and Council would be the land use authority for the property. So that's just something to weigh in, in your, your consideration tonight as to whether you would like to direct staff to move forward with, with a proposed ballot measure. I think the other consideration that, again, may be germane to this discussion is, you know, the staff has been very busy working to establish a larger open space in our western foothills. And I think it certainly can happen without annexation, we, we know that. For instance, part of Porterfield Creek, open space remains to be in the county. But it does, again, given the change in land use authority, gives us the ability, again, to provide, you know, to have, to utilize our general plan policy to guide future development, including a dedication of open space. And that's something that we've been in conversations with the Clearwater Ranch project proponents is, is ultimately some dedication of open space. And again, we can tie that back to, to our general plan policy, and those are things we've been working on as part of trying to maybe establish a larger area of open space in our western foothills. So just kind of two points, again, for your consideration. Again, the, the request tonight is that we realize there's a lot to digest, there's a lot of moving parts that would, would need to be completed in order for this project to move forward, but there's a lot of steps and opportunities for really delving into the specific development potential, reviewing the design of the project, the layout of future development, you know, through those planning processes that would be required to move this project through all those steps. But really tonight, we, we just wanted to get your, well, one, to introduce this project to, to the council, because staff has been spending a lot of time working with, with the Clearwater Ranch team on this proposal, and we felt it was important to bring this forward at this time to kind of get your perspective and weigh in, because we, we know time is of the essence, especially when it comes to placing a ballot measure, to get your, get your direction input on, on whether this is something you'd like us to move forward with.
Kevin, do you want to finish the?
Yeah, Mike, can you just go forward? I think we probably got this through everyone's discussion. One more, Mike. This ballot initiative's just going to move the line on the paper, and there's going to be many, many more steps and opportunities for the council to weigh in. This is just kind of the first one, again, recommending a reimbursement agreement. Mike, next one.
So David kind of just went over all of these. I mean, kind of the, the first one would be, we ask the applicant to get the signatures, they get their two parcels on, we move the line to that. Or we sponsor it, move the line out to include these two parcels. Or third, like David was just mentioning, we could look at more comprehensive amendment to our UGB, bringing that line further to the west, affording us more opportunities for open space as projects kind of come along. So that, I mean, if you want to do number three, I think we were kind of thinking that we would come back with this item with maybe some, a little bit more, you know, information about how that might work if, if, and then, again, as David mentioned, that would also probably include extending the, the timeframe for the expiration. So we'd be moving it out and extending the expiration. That's much more than what, you know, Clearwater Ranch is asking, but this is kind of a big effort, so if there's an opportunity here for us to, to, if this makes sense, you know, then maybe we should take the opportunity to do it now, and we can come back with some more information about that if that's the direction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I don't mean to hog Mike. I know Councilmember Bagby loves to get in on the land use subject, but, you know, the only thing that concerns me about extending the sunset is I don't want to miss the opportunity for public input. And I know at the last time, I can remember, it was quite a heated discussion about what should be and what should not be in that urban growth boundary. So, you know, I don't mind moving the sunset with this particular ballot initiative, but I just want to make sure that we give ample time for the public to come and voice their concerns about what we may be doing, or extending, or, or cutting back in certain areas. So that was, that's my only concern on the sunset issue.
I definitely think we need the public's input, because people voted in 2010 for something, and now we're asking them to, you know, change it. And so I think it's really important that we hear from the voters what they want.
Yeah, I think that that's my, that's a flex of my concern. It's, it's basically two issues and a, plus a, plus a third issue. I'm very cognizant of our fiscal situation, and taking on a ballot initiative, I think, has to be taken very seriously right now, just because of, of where we are with our, with our general fund. On the, on the other hand, I look at it as, if we, if we have control of, over it, it's not even a debate as to whether or not we're going to do public outreach. We're going to do public outreach, we are going to have public meetings, we are going to have the public revisit this, and we are going to say, well, if we're going to do this, we might as well extend it. Realistically, we're talking about a very sparse handful of properties, we're talking about very, very small additional development that gets us, that potentially gets us the most public access of, of, of any town our size in Sonoma County and probably in Northern California. So that's why I take this very, this, this very seriously. I like the option three, because I actually think that we need more information and we need to come back. This is a great introduction, it was great to meet the applicants, it was great to see the maps, but it, this isn't the kind of thing that I think a council should be making a decision on the first night, that they're necessarily seeing it, but it was a, a great introduction. What I want to see coming back is the implications of all of the other properties on the western hills, which are, again, a handful. We've also heard tonight from Clearwater Ranch that they're willing to extend Porterfield Creek, which is 50 acres. That's incredible additional access to the entire community. And, I mean, just realistically, I'd have to look at it on a map again, but that gets us one or two properties close to Leiter Ranch, which we just closed on, and gets it close to connecting that entire ridge line. So while I know it's going to cost us more money upfront, it's going to cost us more staff time upfront, doing it piecemeal, when there is so much potential, and then, of course, with the Anderson property at the north end of town, might possibly being interested, where, being interested in being a part of this conversation, you have the Angel, Angeli property, which is currently listed, that, they now have a comp with Leiter Ranch that they can use to kind of see, you know, what the, their, the value of their parcels are. So I don't want to cut off that possibility of being able to revisit, locking down those, those access to the, to the western hillside, and having it be a tremendous resource for the entire community. So I, I'm leaning toward option three, but I definitely need more information. And if that's the case, that this, that the city is going out on a ballot initiative, I'll want to see the, you know, how many community meetings we can manage, you know, what, what you think it would take to, for, to, to get community input for this. And obviously, a price tag for, for a lot of this, and a review of, because the, the current general plan does say that this is our, this is in the general plan, is that if we have an opportunity to put some additional hillside properties in, into open space, or either, even into protection, that we will discuss this with the landowners where potential, in exchange for some, for, for modest potential development. So that's what I'd, I'd like to see at our next meeting or a subsequent meeting. I think it's very important that if, if we go that route, the city has to control the ballot language so that, and then, of course, what I would really like to see is if the property owners are interested in partnering with us, having them pay into an escrow account so that we can cover our, we can help cover our expenses upfront. That's what I'd like to see at a, at a subsequent meeting.
Again, Councilmember Bagby jumped all over the stuff that I was going to say, but anyway, no, I, I think this is a huge opportunity here. One, the, that I'm really thinking of, is the voters came out in 2010, so the public, public comments are a must. We've got to hear, they obviously, it was Measure Q, I believe, came in and said, hey, here's what we want to do, and sunsetted it to 2030. So I think that's a must, as we hear what they want to say along with property owners up there. It's, it's, it's such an opportunity to, to expand Porterfield Creek right now, and like Katie was saying, that if we could get that 50 acres, kind of not to, not to echo everything, but, I mean, it's a huge opportunity, and Cloverdale has all those, and it got mentioned, of the properties around City Park and the Leiter Ranch and all this, we're, we're combining, we're going to have an awesome open space area in Cloverdale. And so I think that's, that it definitely has to be brought to the voters again, and, and see if this is something that they want to do. And I don't see why they wouldn't, but also the financial part of it is also another thing. This is, there's a lot of moving parts here. Once we bring it back and kind of, kind of dissect this thing a little bit, I think we'll move forward on that. I'm also for option three here, but just the opportunity to expand the open space is huge for Cloverdale.
Yeah, I, can I just also comment? I, I just realized, I did miss one point, and there's a really nice letter of support from, from Chief Jenkins in this, and Katie touched on it a bit, too. You know, when, when we're talking about getting additional control over these open space parcels, we're not just creating an incredible resource for Cloverdale and our visitors for generations to come, we're also increasing the fire safety potential, because we would have increased fire roads and, and access. We'd also be able to remit, remediate some of the, the damage in the streams that, in the hillsides, which flow directly into the Russian River. And we've seen the result of bad hillside management when we had the, the mudslides in the Portofino Creek area a couple of years ago. It is so important for, for the city to be able to manage that, for our public safety and for the enjoyment of our public. And so, you know, I think that that's what, the message that we also need to, to work on, if we're, if we decide to go the route that we're handling the ballot measure, it's really communicating the, the stacked benefits of us taking this approach with, with the public. So if you have any thoughts on that, that you can bring back to the council, it would be appreciated.
So I won't go too deep into my comments, because Councilmember Bagby knocked it out of the park with this one. I know, coming onto the council, one of my goals was to protect Cloverdale and the hills around us, make sure that we were safe from fire, but also safe from building. And I know that's probably what Vice Mayor had when they set this urban growth boundary, was to protect the hills from being built on and things along those lines. My worry is how they would be zoned, but that's later on down the road, so I'm not even going to discuss that. But one of the things we've been doing, and I know Councilmember Bagby's been huge with this, is creating that open space along our west side. And this is the property that starts connecting, and we're really close. She mentioned other ones that are for sale. Working for months with that Realtor and the families and things, trying to work on that. It, it just creates more of a, what I call a destination city versus, you know, just a little town of Cloverdale. And it gives us somewhere to, to, people to come in and visit and spend their money and then go home when they're done. I think this is going to worry about our budget. I worry about our budget, we need to find ways that we're going to make this happen. I agree with number three. I agree, we have a long road ahead of us, but this was put on our plate by someone that didn't, it benefits them more than it does us, to be honest. And, and so I want to make sure that we do the town halls, we have everybody's input, and that we have the help where it is necessary, and that's financially, along with, along with the input. I think that we gave pretty clear direction as to everyone's ideas. Jose, you want to say something? Consensus on three? Everyone's nodding. I'm going to open it up to the public, if you guys don't mind. I know there's no, really, it's only a direction, but I still, I'd like to, anyone in the audience want to make any public comments regarding this item? Please come forward, Susie.
I'm Susie Cummings, and I live in Clover Springs. And I use the Preserve, and I'm very happy, that's why we moved here. I'm very happy it's there, and I'm really excited that you all are interested in option three, because I think it's a fabulous opportunity. And with, at some point, the great Redwood Trail, starting in Cloverdale, too, Cloverdale is an awesome town, city. I get all excited about it. So anyway, I'm really happy I moved here, and you guys are wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please.
Good evening. I find myself surprised to be here, because I knew nothing about any of this, and Susie kind of texted me, and with five minutes to go, she snatched me up, and here I am, with something to say, as it turns out. I live at, did I say, my name is Linda Chaffin, I live at 209 Shibley Way, which, if you look at your map, is exactly across the pond, which I just learned doesn't half belong to me, is the Babu property. And so that pond is the whole reason I bought my house in 2017 and moved to Cloverdale. And I like to think I've been able to give a little bit of something to the town, and so I'm happy to hear that there's at least this kind of consideration. I didn't come prepared. hearings, and it's -- I'm glad to hear that you will be listening to what the public has to say. I was in public hearings in the state, and, you know, the decision was made before, and it was just perfunctory to have everybody come say their piece, and then they did what they knew they were going to do at the very beginning. So I trust that that's not the case with our groups. The pond is used almost every day by youth who come there to fish. And I have always thought that was awesome, because what is there to do in Cloverdale when you're 12 years old, 14 years old? And these kids come there with their fishing poles and their buddies, and they spend two or three hours, half the time, at least four or five days a week, I'd say. And I have never experienced any kind of -- it's not a place where kids, you know, bring their beers and get drunk and loud and carry on over there. I've never, ever seen that happen. I've lived here since 2017. It's been respectfully used and appreciated and enjoyed. Some of them bring a little dinghy, and they row out in the lake there and cast their little poles, and sometimes somebody gets one about that big. It's very exciting. Anyway, my time is up. I just wanted to make sure that you know there's a prior sort of non-conforming use right, if you will, for the children to go fishing in that pond. I understand it doesn't belong to any of us, but to me, that's important. Thanks.
You know, I fished in that pond 35 years ago. Same thing. I was one of those kids. I trespassed with my bike and fished in the pond. Any other public comments? Anyone in the virtual? Thank you. Saying that, I'll bring her back. We have good direction. Anything else that needs to be said?
Mayor, if it's okay, just real quickly, I'll summarize, I think, council's direction tonight. What we heard is support for option three, as outlined by staff. Option three entails reviewing a more comprehensive amendment to the urban growth boundary for further evaluation and consideration, and doing so with input from the community and the public on a proposed amendment. If that process ends up in a ballot measure, council would like to control that process and would support a city-developed ballot measure. And the cost is something that's of concern of council, and that we'd be looking at a reimbursement agreement to cover the costs of putting a ballot measure before the voters, along with covering the costs of staff time involved in the planning effort.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. I two, it's adjusting maximum allowable solid waste composting and recycling rates under the Solid Waste Collection Franchise Agreement between the city and Recology Sonoma Marin Incorporated. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, City Clerk Maloney, if you could allow both Alex Sullard and Jim Howison as attendees for this presentation, that'd be appreciated. Mayor, members of council, please oblige me, I'm going to give you a little bit of history here, primarily for the benefit of our newest council members who haven't been through a rate increase on solid waste. So I want to just give you a little bit of background. I know it's pretty well covered in the agenda report, but back in 2011, the council approved a franchise agreement with a solid waste company that was referred to as Redwood Empire Disposal. It was also well-known as the Raddo Group of Companies. The franchise agreement provided, at the time, Redwood Empire Disposal, or RED, the exclusive right to provide solid waste services within the city. The franchise agreement covered both solid waste and green waste, in addition to recyclables. So there's kind of the three components that are addressed within the solid waste contract. As part of that franchise agreement, it does provide guidance on addressing annual rate adjustments. The franchise agreement provides that there -- originally, it provided that there were four components for review, and then subsequently, there was an amendment to what's referred to as the retroactive rate pass-through element. The four components are typically analyzed annually by Recology, that has since assumed the franchise agreement. Council did approve, assigning the franchise agreement from Redwood Empire to Recology. And since that time, Recology has submitted the annual rate adjustment requests that have come before council. So typically, that's done around this timeframe, in the month of December, I mean, in the month of September, excuse me. And that has a history that was based on originally, the county adjusted the solid waste tipping fee in July, and that gave time to the franchise hauler to reflect how that increase in tipping fees would be reflected in rates. Because, again, that's a charge that the landfill charges our hauler to be able to dispose the waste at the central landfill. So the franchise hauler, again, has exclusive right to operate within the city. Under the franchise agreement, they have the right to request an annual rate adjustment to -- based on those four components. Together or collectively, they're referred to as the refuse rate index, or RRI. Each one of those components has different factors that ultimately affect your solid waste rates. One of the primary ones is the collection component. And again, that's where that RRI is the main factor, is what does it cost to actually provide the service to collect solid waste, green waste, and recyclables in the community? The components that are made up of that RRI include labor costs, fuel costs, vehicle replacement, vehicle maintenance, and then all other. Both Recology is here, Nikki Burke from Recology is here today, and also Alex Sullard and Jim Howison are here from R3. As part of this annual rate adjustment request, we typically ask an independent firm to do an analysis of the proposed rate increase, is to validate the numbers and actually work through the numbers to ensure that what the rate adjustment that's being requested by the franchise hauler is accurate and is based on verifiable data. So included in the rate adjustment is, again, that disposal fee component that is a reflection of the increase in the tipping fee at the landfill. Traditionally, that tipping fee was adjusted in July. With changes in landfill operations by the county, that tipping fee adjustment was -- the timeframe was adjusted back to April. What that means is that the franchise hauler is incurring additional disposal costs at the landfill, starting in April of each year, and they're just now asking in September to adjust the rates. And so that requires kind of that retroactive look back to how the fee should be adjusted to cover that period of time. Traditionally, we -- the compostable material component was kind of built in to the overall rates, but there were some changes that resulted in decreased cost per tonnage. This year, there was a 5.1% increase in compostable materials processing, and that's, again, a reflection of the increase in rates that's presented in your staff report. I failed to mention earlier that one of the key drivers of the rate increase this year was that council last year heard a presentation from Recology, and ultimately, an audit that was performed by R3 to adjust their rates because their rate revenues were identified as being below the levels needed to cover operational costs. So council did approve an amendment to the franchise agreement that provided for the special rate adjustment. There were various options that council considered as part of that, ultimately decided on the option that the rate increases that were needed to cover operational costs would be phased in over a four-year period. In this current period, that means, from that special rate increase alone, that there's a 10% rate increase based on the amendment that council approved, adjusting the franchise agreement. Let's see, in addition to the amendment to the agreement, the franchise agreement to address the special rate review request, we also heard a presentation last year about legislation that increased the cost of solid waste hauling, really throughout California. This bill was referred to, we often heard the term SB 1383. What that did is put additional requirements on the city as well as the hauler to address that particular legislation with the goal of diverting additional, particularly food waste and green waste, from the landfill. And so that also resulted in some additional costs. What we're seeing in this particular rate adjustment request is rate increases ranging from 19.5% to 21.2% for the larger container sizes. That, again, is a reflection of both the amendment in the franchise agreement under the special rate review, plus the increase in costs under the refuse rate index. You can -- they're kind of roughly split between the two, you say, kind of 10% and about 11% comprised of the overall 20% increase in solid waste rates. And that is reflected in the customer rates based on which size of solid waste bin that the customer subscribes to. So a 20-gallon subscription results in roughly a $5 increase in rates, whereas a 32-gallon results in about a $6.75 increase, and it goes up from there based on the larger amount of waste that's being placed theoretically in a larger container. So the request tonight is, and recommendation is that council adopt a resolution that would approve the maximum allowable solid waste composting and recycling rates under your franchise agreement, and repeal the rate schedule that was previously adopted by council in 2022 under Resolution Number 082-2022. With that said, we did request R3 to review and analyze this rate adjustment request to make sure it was accurate. They did do a request for Recology to make some minor modifications, but otherwise found that the rate adjustment was valid and reflective of the costs of providing solid waste services in the city. And we did work collaboratively with Recology on addressing their request. And I know Ms. Burke is here tonight, if you have any questions regarding the refuse rate index and some of the cost increases that are reflected in their rate adjustment request application. So I'll kind of pause there. Happy to entertain any questions council may have about this item. And again, we do have Alexander Sullard and Jim Howson on Zoom available to address any questions about their report and analysis of this change in rates. And Ms. Burke is here as well from Recology to answer any specific questions about their rate adjustment application.
First. Anyone? A couple of quick questions. I don't know who will answer them, but I'll start with you, Dave, and if not, we'll pass it on. In our original agreement, the franchise agreement, or did we agree to pay for the labor increases? I just, I don't remember that one, so.
Mayor, the answer to your question is, did we agree in the franchise agreement to adjust rates based on changes in labor rates? And labor rates are one of the components that make up the refuse rate index. And so they're all weighted. It's a weighted component of the overall RRI that is part of that collection component. So if the hauler, the franchise hauler, experiences increases in wages, that is reflected in the allowable rate increases that they present as part of their rate adjustment.
And under the all other, any idea what fits into that category?
I probably want to defer to both Mrs. Burke and Alexander Sullard at R3 to kind of talk about what are those individual costs that make up that component.
Perfect, thank you.
And Vice Mayor Walter, council members and staff, thank you for having me here. So I wanted to go back to the labor question just really quickly. So we're not reflecting our actual labor costs. Unfortunately for us, as you may be aware, we did have a union negotiation this year and saw some pretty significant increases because we have drivers who want to be able to live in the area, and that's challenging. What the labor costs that you see reflected are more the publicly published Bureau of Labor Statistics index on what average labor costs are doing. So we have a slightly lower increase in this rate increase than you would have if we were reflecting our exact labor cost. As far as all other, there is included in your packet, in our submission packet, which is, I think, included for, there is on page nine, there is a layout of all the expenses that are included in each one of these categories. But items that you would see in all other include things like rent and lease, which is a relatively small amount. Let me see if I can find some of the bigger ones in here. We have professional services, we have regional allocations, which is largely labor reflective of costs such as myself, our controller, our general -- not our general manager, sorry, our coast manager, our accounting team, those types of administrative support. See if I can find what the others are. And then there is some costs for, we are part of a larger corporation that provides IT services, legal services, insurance services, those types of things, and so you would see that in all other.
Thank you. On that, anyone else have any questions?
Just kind of a statement. You know, it's kind of funny that we had the creek folks here today, and we did that proclamation. And, you know, I know I've talked to our city manager before about getting the word out to our community that they are entitled to one free pickup a year. They just have to call ahead and arrange a time. But I just wish that we could come together somehow, and I'm going back quite a few years when, at the Citrus Fair, we used to put out big green containers, and people could dump their tires, their refrigerators. Yeah, it was an expense, but it was just part of the service. And I think that would, of course, alleviate a lot of the dumping that we have going into our creeks. There's nothing like free to get people to do something. And, you know, maybe at the next renewal, we can drag the county in and do And, you know, maybe at the next renewal, we can drag the county in and, and do something where we, people for three weeks could just bring their junk and get rid of it. So it's, it's just a thought.
Open up to the public. Does anyone in the public want to make any comments or have any questions? Nothing in virtual? All right, I'll bring it back. So under the agenda report, it's a direction. I know it's a resolution, I apologize.
Happy to remove the resolution. Resolution of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale approving maximum allowable solid waste composting and recycling rates and repealing rate schedules adopted under resolution number 082-2022.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect, so we have a first and a second.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Thank you so much for being here tonight, we really appreciate it, and the answers to the questions. Moving on to I3, letter of commitment to the Sonoma County Community Resilience Centers Network Planning Grant Application to the California Strategic Growth Council CRC Program.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. The item in your packet is, is not something normally we would bring to council. When we are asked to support a grant application and if it's consistent with the goals and policies of the city council, we will normally ask the mayor to sign, you know, sign a letter of commit, or a letter of support. And in your packet is a, a letter of support that was signed previously by the mayor for their initial application. In, in this case, La Familia Sana was submitting a, a grant application to establish or be part of a, the Sonoma County Community Resilient Center Network in partnership with the Sonoma County Coed or a community organization active in disaster. We've learned, you know, from a number of emergency events that we've participated in, that the Coed was a valuable resource in terms of providing services to sensitive populations in the community, including seniors, elderly who have medical issues, those with functional and access needs, members of the Latinx population, farm workers, in, in addition to those experiencing food insecurity. The, the Coed, it was again, a valuable resource during emergencies to, to assist the city's emergency response. This particular grant application, the, which was sponsored by the California Strategic Growth Council, was to provide funding to enable local nonprofits to have access to funding to build on the, those existing efforts that they've made to emergency response. It was kind of nice to finally see that there was a response from the state to actually provide funding for some of the initiatives that we had, we had been doing really without any support from, from the state. But we were, we were asked subsequent to the initial effort by La Familia Sana for a letter of commitment. And this particular letter of commitment, which a draft is included in your packet as attachment two, called out for some specific requests. In particular, to ask that a letter of commitment acknowledged that we're fully informed about the grant application and familiar with the specific requirements, and we included kind of an FAQ about the grant. But maybe more importantly, it also requested that we, we indicated our commitment to sign and execute an, a memorandum of understanding. And given the requirement to commit the city to an MOU, staff felt it was important to bring this to council and get your support ultimately for the letter of commitment because it, it does bind the city to signing and executing an MOU with, with the Coed and La Familia Sana. With that said, we, we do recommend, we do support this, this idea for, for council's consideration, but we, again, we wanted to make sure that council was, was fully aware and also understood that it comes with a commitment to execute a MOU. I think in terms of an MOU, if you're kind of wondering, well, what, what, what might that entail? A good example would be the MOU that was adopted by council with Sonoma County CERT. In that case, we entered into an MOU with CERT to provide emergency services again at the direction of, of the police chief during, during an emergency event where there's a local emergency declared. So we, we think there, there's not a, there's not a significant concern with indicating your intent to sign an MOU. We don't have a draft, obviously, for your review tonight. It's, it's probably premature at this point because we don't, we don't know if they will be successful. We hope they will be because we think it will build into our resiliency efforts that we've, you know, we think we've, especially with, with chief's help, you know, we've made significant ambroses in our emergency preparedness efforts as part of, you know, Resilient Cloverdale and the Clover Ready Initiative. And this is, I think, kind of reflective of that effort to, to build more resilience locally. Since this agenda item was posted, we also heard from Alexander Valley Healthcare that they are also pursuing a grant from the California Strategic Growth Council. They, they asked for a letter of support, not a letter of commitment, I think, because in their case, they're asking for funding to build a, you know, for, 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 for physical building. In this case, this is for, for, I think, for services and building this again, improving the overall network of the Sonoma County Coed throughout Sonoma County. So I'll pause there, Mayor, and happy to entertain any questions you may have about this agenda item.
Any questions?
David, I know you don't have a, like you said, you don't have a copy of the MOU, but I just, I think that if we do engage in a partnership with them, I think it'll be invaluable to, to our community to add this as a, as a resource. But would it be appropriate to include, just, I mean, like, like we do with the chamber, even though we, you know, we have an MOU with the chamber, and that there, we're actually paying to provide a service. This is, this is more of a, just a partnership with, with La Familia Sana. But is it appropriate to just request like a, a check-in, a report on, like when they do their annual report, if they just kind of can, can come to the council annually or whatever we think is a, an appropriate amount of time, just to kind of, you know, report, report out on the services that are being provided? Maybe there's some of their successes, maybe some of their, you know, their challenges, things like that. What would, what would that look like if we included that in an MOU?
Yeah, I think, I mean, traditionally, MOUs are between, you know, government entities and the Coed is kind of a quasi-government organization. But I think usually they're outlined in an MOU or the responsibilities of, of the, the parties that are to that MOU. And I think that could, that could be articulated in a, in an arm, MOU, or what are the expectations of, of La Familia Sana, the Sonoma County Coed as part of the MOU to the, with the city? So if that means, you know, reporting out, reporting back, that, you know, that certainly could be built into, in, I, I think is a, is a component of the MOU. And it's important to-
And then what would our responsibilities be? I think that, yeah, you just, you sort of touched on that a bit, but what are our, our responsibilities to them be in being able to support their mission, help them get their message out, things like that? Yeah, what would our responsibilities be?
Right. I, I think, just what I would envision a key component is communication and collaboration. And, you know, it, often we, we do call upon our nonprofit partners during emergency events to, to assist us. And, and sometimes what they're also looking for is that, that, that they're, they're not exposed from a liability perspective as part of their emergency response. And they may be looking for us to say, if we call them, we're not to, to respond, maybe to seniors in need or to provide a food service to, to food insecurity, you know, because of food insecurity or, or just there's a need for food service during an emergency event, making sure that they, they, their, you know, exposure from a liability perspective is covered.
Yeah, they might, I'm just, I'm probably getting way ahead of myself, but they, they may want to, as part of the MOU, as part of their outreach services, be able to utilize some park facilities and then not have to worry about the overhead or the liability issues. That's what I, that's the sort of thing that, in lieu of possibly a monetary contribution, we might be able to work with them on, on facilitating access to, you know, some of our, our properties for outreach purposes, for example. So I'd, yeah, I'd be interested in, in seeing, you know, examples of that in an MOU as part of the conversation. So thank you.
All right, well, I have nothing else, and I'll bring it to the public. Anyone have any comments or questions?
Do you have Jeanette Pantoja from the Coed?
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Jeanette Pantoja. I'm the Director of Sonoma County Coed. Wish I was meeting you all in person. I've historically deferred to and participated in, with the leadership of Resilient Cloverdale in an effort to not duplicate efforts. I just want to clarify on some of the questions that, the, with the planning grant, we actually get a year to develop the MOU. So the requirement is to have an MOU executed at the end of the first year of the two-year grant period. So we have plenty of time to collectively shape what that MOU would look like. One of the things that they are requesting, the MOU is basically referring to the city's commitment to participate in what they're calling a collaborative stakeholder structure. But it's essentially a steering committee for the project. The way that we've designed the work plan right now, it's like up to 10 meetings in the two-year grant term. And that would just, you know, ensure that the city's representation in the, in the planning work so that, you know, what we are developing and moving forward is responsive to your local needs. And I'm really hoping that this process can help catalyze a better relationship between Sonoma County Coed and the local government there. We already have really great relationships with some of the CDOs, and like I said, I participate in Resilient Cloverdale, and they're really enthusiastic about this opportunity. And, you know, we've been coordinating with Alexander Valley Healthcare on their proposal and potential opportunities to collaborate and coordinate. Our interest is in developing a coordinated countywide network so that we are really maximizing opportunities for cross-regional learning, resource sharing, capacity building among these different community resilient centers. And practically, in an emergency, we have pre-identified sites in different areas of the county where we can, that we can leverage as hubs for supply distribution or as a place to locate, you know, recovery services, kind of what we did in collaboration with the county around the recovery support centers following the winter storms.
Great, thank you, Jeanette. Any questions from the council for Jeanette? Great, thank you for being here to, to speak. Other public comments? Seeing none? All right. We have a direction.
This is really, you know, this is really an application, in its, in its essence, it's a planning grant. And what, where they're asking us to do is, will you cooperate with our planning? And I enthusiastically hope that we would cooperate with our planning, so I'd really, yeah, have a lot of support for this. And also, it's great to see some CRC money, hopefully, knock on wood, flow into Cloverdale through La Familia Sana and Alexander Valley Healthcare. I think that, but both of those projects are, are very deserving. So I definitely support saying that we're going to support them and then following through and doing it.
Yeah, that's, when you see the words MOU, it makes you a little nervous, that's why it comes here, however. Looking for the fine lines, but I'm glad we can, you have direction, we're, we're, David, you already have the letters, correct? Letters of support for this.
There, there's a, a template in the packet, we will, with council's support to move forward, we'll, we'll add the required components and package it up for your, your signature, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Just for clarification, do we need a, a vote to authorize the mayor to execute that letter, or can we move forward? I think that's-
It does ask for motion? I'm sorry.
Move to, to submit the support letter.
Motion and a second.
Sorry, I didn't catch the second.
Wheeler, a second.
All right. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes 5-0, and thanks for catching that.
All right, we'll move into subcommittee reports. Does anyone have anything to report? I don't know if any subcommittees have met since our last meeting. Okay, seeing none. That makes that go by fast. Councilmember reports? We have a written report from Councilmember Bagby.
I submitted my report in writing, but I just want to remind councilmembers that Sonoma Clean Power is going to be holding a community workshop here on Mon, here in this building at Cloverdale Performing Arts Center on Monday, 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. regarding the newly created Geyser's GeoZone. That's a partnership between the counties of Mendocino and Sonoma to support development of next-generation power development at the Geyser's. And the, the Board of, Sonoma Clean Power just recently authorized staff to move forward, and Sonoma and Mendocino counties are both on board. So information about the GeoZone is available at the Sonoma Clean Power website, and it's also, information about this meeting's been shared widely on social media. And just as a courtesy to Sonoma Clean Power, since we're, we're members, it's been sent out on the city newsletter and it's been posted on our website. So please be sure to attend and share that information with your networks.
Anything else to report? Okay. We have a letter of support for ACA 13, the voting thresholds, under our letters of support.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update, the ACA legislation did pass the Assembly, our, our locally Assemblyman Wood did vote in favor. It passed by 56 votes. Senate Appropriation Committee also supported ACA 13 on a 5 to 2 vote, and it looks like it's about ready to clear the Senate. If it does, it will qualify for the ballot in March.
Thank you. Move into the city manager report.
Just a, a, a quick report out that we, we did close on the Lita Ranch property. There will be official announcement forthcoming and a press release. We'll keep council prized, we're just being sensitive to the Lita family and working with them in the open space district on a, on, on formal announcement of the close of that wonderful piece of property.
Anything else?
Nothing else.
Ernie?
I mean, quickly, even given the, the, the letter of support right now, that is something we're continuing to look at. Obviously, the dates are important because of the roundtable, the business roundtable ballot measure later that year. So we're following all that, and then we're also kind of following the continued changes in housing laws and housing implications, the laws that impact housing. That keeps moving, things keep happening, and I, I believe in more legislation is coming down and being proposed. So it's, it's definitely continues to evolve. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Any direction for future agenda items? I have one. It's that time of year to start the evaluation process. It's that time of year to start the evaluation process for city manager and city attorney. So I'm going to ask that we maybe have a closed session to start the process at our next meeting. And then as of right now, we have nothing for our next agenda. So most likely, there will be no meeting at the end of September. Anything else from anyone? The good of the order right here.
How does that work for our timing? Does that actually help you, Kevin, get a little more time to come back with our option three under Clearwater Ranch this evening? Gives you, gives you more time to do your homework. Okay.
Agenda reports would otherwise be due next week, so it gives them a little more time.
All right, with nothing else, meeting adjourned at 7:49, our next meeting is scheduled for October 11th. Thank you.